For the trees, I remember.
In progress.
Okay, all right. Um, good morning, everyone. If we could stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. This is Monday, August twenty-third. Um, we're going to start by minutes of the meeting held on August second. Could I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to start our meeting with new business, um, and that new business is police department detail rate. Mark, would you like to come up and explain to us, please?
The PTO rate that we currently have is based off seventy dollars an hour charge to the vendor. That would include the police officer, the administrative fees by the town, and the cruiser fee. I would like to increase that to seventy-five dollars per hour and increase the officer's per hour rate from forty-five to fifty. That will put us in the same area and in the ballgame with everyone else around us. There are, the pony is higher, um, but most of the departments now are fifty hours an hour for the officer. So it's just another thing to stay, to stay with our surrounding communities as well as what's, what seems to be the going, the going rate now in the state. We've had a conversation with DOT on the last, uh, one of the last projects we had, and they said that we're actually low. So from what they've been paying, so I think, I think that's a reasonable increase at five dollars for the officer.
So in other words, by going from seventy to seventy-five, we're, it, we're not, we're kind of in the ballpark with everyone around us, so to speak.
Absolutely, and, uh, you know, it still stays with the administrative fee of fifteen dollars back to the town plus a ten dollars for the cruiser fee. And as you know, it's a revolving fund, it's, it's paid, paid by the, and returning money to return to the town by the contractor, so whoever they may be.
I don't have a problem with that.
No, I mean.
No, I don't have a problem with that either.
I mean, obviously, if it's, if it's, as you say.
We need a motion to do that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to accept the increase to seventy-five dollars per hour.
Can I second that?
Um, if we could identify a, um, would that be starting week, in other words, this week? So in other words, those that may have worked a detail last week technically would not receive the new rate.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to start at September first if that would be.
Okay, all right.
Okay, as of September first.
Okay, perfect, excellent.
Then there's no, then there's nobody complaining.
That'll give you.
I would want to avoid that.
Yeah.
That'll give you an opportunity to advise your vendors to, if you wish.
Okay, perfect. Um, I think we have a, um, a motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. Okay, um, new hire incentive policy consideration. I read through that, yeah.
I sent in a, uh, a memo regarding, uh, the request for us to look at the town policy regarding, regarding new hires.
Mm-hmm.
Our policy is very outdated and basically if we hire a new employee, whether it's a town employee or a police employee, fire employee, they have to work a full year before they see any vacation time. Most towns now are giving vacation, um, to the new employees. And the other thing is there's transfers of employees. I understand that obviously there's a union situation involved that negotiations would have to be done at the next, the next time that we do them, which is next year. But I think the policy itself, I think is, uh, way behind times. If we're going to attract anyone to come here to work and we're not giving any incentives or giving them something that at least shows that we, uh, you know, that we're going to do what other towns are doing for them, we're not going to hire the quality of people we're looking to hire and even retain.
I know that, I actually know two, three businesses that have had to do some adjustments because changing times, I guess we call it, for lack of knowing what else to call it. And same situation to hire, um, people who specifically for specific, all right? Um, so I guess, are you saying that, um, are we using the same policy for the police department that we do for this, for that?
The same policy is, is townwide.
Townwide.
And as it stands right now, once they've attained their probationary period of six months, they can then begin to use their sick time.
Okay.
That would have accrued during that, that time period from the start of employment.
Right, right.
They're not given their, they're not allowed to begin using vacation until after they've been with a town for a year. I gave you copies of several of the.
I started believing them.
And I think that, that if we are going to consider something like this, I'm hesitant to allow vacation to be used in that first six-month block. They should certainly, we could certainly consider them accruing it at the start of employment, but I don't think you necessarily want them using vacation or sick time in that first six months.
No, I have, I have no problem with the probationary period of that six-month, uh, window that, that vacations not get a lot of payment at that point.
Okay.
Until we solidify their employment.
Except that, and, but again, I mean, I believe we've hired a couple of different people in the last year, let's just say in the last year. Now, they're obviously, I believe, non-union, and we did make some exceptions.
Yes, and Mark has done the same thing.
Okay.
If, if he is an employee that works comp time, they're able to use that in lieu of payment for taking time off.
Okay, okay, all right.
So we've been.
And I guess my other question is, is that I know that if you're hiring someone, I don't want to say, if you, if you've, if you're fortunately, fortunate enough to hire someone from somewhere else, what happens? What does that do for you? Because obviously you're trying, we know that it's a, how do I want to say it? How do I want to say it correctly? I don't want to say we're stealing other people's, you know, but it's just.
So.
Help me here.
I think there is a risk.
Okay.
To, um, allowing someone to bring vacation that they've earned.
Okay.
With a prior employer to their record here in Belmont. I, I potentially see that as a, a significant cost to you or to the departments on overtime.
Right, overtime.
Okay.
Because if someone is coming to us, and again, in many instances, they're paid out their vacation.
I was just gonna say, but in most cases, they're paid out the vacation anyway, so, all right.
Grab, they're, you know, they may be losing their sick time when they come from a prior employer, but they're paid out for that vacation time that they would have earned. And where they don't have the seniority with us, I just think we're, we would be, I mean, they could conceivably have been in a position with another community and have worked, I don't know, fifteen years and be eligible in that community for four weeks of vacation. Suddenly, they're coming on with us and we're saying, well, we'll allow you to have that eligibility of four weeks.
Right.
And then they have more vacation time than someone that's been with the town of Belmont for ten years.
No, and, and I, I agree with that. My, my intent here would be to, uh, allow the two weeks of vacation to accrue immediately and but not be taken until after the six-month probationary period expires. Because that gives them in that, in, in actuality, three weeks that first year because they can accrue forty years, forty hours of comp time. And I'll tell you why, why I brought this forward now is because I lost a guy that I had who would have come here. Uh, he went from, he went from Canterbury to Boston. Uh, they transferred him and gave him three dollars an hour more and he transferred his four weeks vacation.
Mm-hmm.
And they gave him sick time.
Wow.
So the care was there. There was no way I could, I could do anything to draw this person over here. I mean, it was just too good of a deal. Uh, I'm not looking to make it that good of a deal, but I think if they can get their two weeks, they can build that forty hours of comp time for three weeks and they started accruing their sick time after six months, um, I think that's fair. I think it's fair across the board for everyone.
I, I.
They're still.
I question that all of department heads should be involved in this conversation at this time.
And, and what I am waiting for is the information from Anna Cole. Because each of your department heads, that this would truly involve that our, a bigger cost impact are going to be your unions. And we need to know if there's any impact on bargaining. Um, we're in the middle of finishing up the third year of our contract. We'll go into negotiations next spring. The question is, does it become a piece that you, you negotiate at that time? Do we open up a conversation with the union now to potentially change and add this? At which point, um, the three, you know, public works, fire, and police, as far as the non-union.
And your town, and your town people, I mean, you got people in your town clerk's office.
I mean.
I mean, there's buying help, there's stealing help, and there's help that's left a job for another reason. Management change in that job, they don't like the new manager or whatever, and they, they're looking for a job and they doubt they have the experience. And you can't answer all situations with just money and time. So I think, I think, I, I'm not disagreeing with this, but I, I think.
No. And I agree with you, John. The, the reason I brought this part forward is to generate this discussion.
Okay.
I wasn't looking for any answer on this today. This was just to get this discussion going because I think we're, we're falling behind early. And it's gonna hurt us in the long run.
And, and.
Oh, I agree with you.
Yeah, we have to kind of keep pace with, with the area towns around us to some degree. I mean, it's not that we, we have to walk on the moon, but we have to have something that's going to get that employee, you know, some kind of recognition as to why they want to come here. And to bring somebody in from another agency, for example, for me, and tell them, oh, I'm sorry, you know, you don't have, you don't have any vacation for a year. You can accumulate forty hours of comp time, but that means you have to work more. You know, they have a couple of kids, they enjoy vacation, they want to go somewhere, they can't for a year. Well, they just came from a place where they might have had three or four. So it's just, you know, something I think we need to discuss and, and I agree with you. I think it should be everyone.
There's also, if they left that place and they, and they got three or four weeks, they're leaving for more than one reason. Either your department's good, the equipment's better, the, the closer to home. There's a lot of different reasons.
Of course.
Someone's gonna take, and they know they're gonna have to take a step, maybe the pay's the same or maybe a little more, but they're gonna take a, a step backward somewhere to regrowth.
Right.
I think that, you know, if you think about the vacation time that they've earned in another employment location, they've earned that based on seniority. And, and I'm surprised that a community would, would start them with the same level of benefit.
I agree with you.
Right.
Coming on as a new employee. I think there's, I mean, there seems, would seem to be risk there, um, to the newer, new employer.
Yeah.
I did have a conversation, it was interesting, with Patrick this morning because he had seen the item on the agenda. And one of his comments was not really in regards to vacation time, but that he knows a few employers who have offered the, um, incentives, the, um, the stipends to, you know, once you've been with the employer for, for three months, you know, they were giving out a thousand dollars, that type of thing.
Oh, tunnel the let's make.
And he, he said that the few employers that he's spoken to, it is not working out as they would have thought it was going to work out.
Oh, really? Oh, wow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because what's happening is they work just long enough to get their, their cash incentive and then, whoo, out the door they go.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, yet to get that, and then they're gone. I wondered that, then they're gone. I wondered.
It's just one of those things. You have to be careful in your, in your hiring. You know, you definitely have to, you need to see, like, for us, why they want to come here. What is a real reason to come here, want to work?
Thank you for the question. You're gonna comment.
I think it's just something that, you know, we need to have discussion about.
All right, I'm sorry.
I do agree. Just so everybody's on the same page, am I correct in assuming that when someone starts, they do start holding their vacation time, but they can't use it? They, they get, they, you know what I'm saying? At the end, at the end of one year, they get two weeks, they get.
Technically, they. Technically, the vacation that they're getting after they've been here a year is for the year going forward.
Second year.
It is not, they are not accruing from the time they start their employment. There's been a long time discussion in Belmont over, okay, so is that eighty hours for the prior twelve months or the twelve months going forward? And we've never really been able to define, um, what that is. Currently, and Catherine certainly could, could comment on this, um, our va- vacation time doesn't accrue in the payroll system in BMSI. The sick time does show an accrual, and that does change each week or rough, or actually, I think she go, she may actually be going in and editing that. I don't know.
It doesn't show what they'll have to say.
Yeah, so I guess the question is, you know, are we looking at potential changes also in our software that would help us to, um, better show accrued time, that type of thing? But I think definitely it's a conversation. The other option that, you know, we've never really talked about too is whether we want to go to a PTO system, which is paid time off, which takes all of your vacation and all of your sick time and says, that's what you have. We have a pretty lucrative sick time policy as it stands right now, and I think if we were going to consider something like that, we might want to, um, we wouldn't, uh.
Phase it in.
We, we wouldn't, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking? We wouldn't take what is already on the books and compute that to paid time off.
That's right. You have to phase in. Yes.
That would be, that would be under the prior policy. This would be under the.
Pushback, you're gonna get it from employees that have earned the time and been loyal and.
Sure, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be a union situation too.
Anyway, we, anyway we go, we have three unions that, you know, we need to have that conversation with.
So just, uh, just as a union question is, say, um, the, um, police department union likes this, whatever we come up with, they like it. But then the highway department doesn't. Do you have two sets of no?
Well, I mean, you could, um, but I wouldn't recommend.
No, because that would get a little wild.
I think that, you know, that would be something that you would have good standing with during negotiations is, you know, this is a, this is a, this is a package deal. This is all, this is all three unions. It's non-union staff as well. We're not gonna.
Right, right.
Pick and select and, you know.
Of course, of course, all right.
And do that. Cause I think it's too hard for someone to administer. Because how, how will, you know, finance know, okay, well, let's see, that employee works for fire, they don't begin to accrue until.
Okay, so here's my other question. Um, we, you know, we sit with everybody and we come up with a plan, all right? But then two of the unions say, no, we don't like it.
If you, if you can't come to an agreement, then you could determine or decide to do it for non-union employees, but that doesn't help a situation in the fi- in the police or fire department or even public works. I mean, I think it's a benefit to the unions. I'd be very surprised if they didn't jump on board and say, oh, yeah, let's, let's do that, um.
Of course. Problem is in this day and age.
Right, I think the biggest.
You just don't know.
You don't know.
I'm just asking, I'm just asking.
If you ask the employees that are already there, it's not an incentive for them to come along and jump on.
Exactly.
Of course, of course.
Yeah, cause they didn't have that opportunity, exactly.
They didn't have that opportunity, so how willing are they gonna be to give the next, I mean.
Right, and, and what do you do with the employee that started three months ago? And say, the union agrees to all this and they think this is a great idea and we implement it in December. What happens to those employees that weren't given that opportunity? You know, do you, do you make it a retroactive thing? You know, so I think there's a, there's so many questions to potentially, I think it's, I do think though, and for a time, and I don't know which contract it was under, it might have been public works, we were doing that. The employee was, or they were given one week, if I remember correctly, after they had worked six months because there was an, we felt that it was important. And it may have been in the other union contracts as well, but it's two contracts ago probably at this point. Um, but we were giving them forty hours when they completed their, their six-month probationary period because we felt there was a benefit to them getting that, that time, and maybe it had to do with when they went to the academy and.
Years ago.
Yes, there was a.
Private, I think it was actually pre-contract stuff. The chiefs would, if you, if you graduated the police academy, they would give you a week vacation on that.
Oh, really? Yeah.
Because you just suffer through all that training, the FTO training and everything, and your mind is blown. It's just one of those de-stress getaway.
Oh, so, so you, so in other words, if you just came out of the police, you got a week's vac- take a week off before you really show up to work?
Right, and the chief, and the chief gave that.
Oh, I see, okay. And that was just the police? Oh, but that was before union? That was before union?
That was before. Before union.
Yeah, because you can't do that with one and on the other.
And it was situational, it was such a situational thing again, physically.
And then there, and then there was, at one point, I vaguely remember, a, um, contract that included some language.
That was a while ago.
It was a while ago, though.
Yep, that was a while.
And, and we removed it for a reason, and I don't know if it had to do with the cost of overtime, because that's where your cost is. Because in reality, the, the wages that you're budgeting include their vacation per se, as long as they're not. The other risk you have is we currently allow people to buy back forty hours of vacation.
Right.
I would be very hesitant to provide someone who's been here six months with two weeks of vacation, and then the next thing you know, they're asking for forty hours of pay.
Right.
That's the other issue that you have.
Well, that would be another, that would be another, that that can't happen till after they've been here.
A year or something.
A year or something. You just kind of, which I don't think that's unreasonable.
Sure. No, I think, I think you could put that stipulation in writing right there that it can't be.
Sure. Yeah, we gotta remember that, yeah, yeah.
So, um, Anna, I did reach out to her last week. She was out of town, so I'm still waiting to hear back from her. But it was good to get the feedback from the other communities because at least we know that they are doing it, but they do have that six-month caveat. They're not giving it until.
And I totally agree with you. Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so maybe what we can do is if we have more information for our next meeting, and maybe we can have fire here also.
Yeah.
Um, then, um, you know, let's keep this going so we don't just drop it and.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I guess my other question to you is our policy, and, and again, um, I don't know that I've ever read the policy. I rely on you for all that information. Is there anything that we should be looking at in that policy to bring it up to date, or do you feel it's?
There may be some other items for sure. The last revision we did was five years ago. We did it, we did update it completely in two thousand sixteen to reflect all of the Family Medical Leave Act changes and something, um, so forth. Um, it certainly would be something that we could task Alicia and Catherine with looking at to see if there's anything else that we may want to consider.
At least look at and see if this.
Yeah. Yeah. And then how it affects the union contracts because they, they tend to mimic each other for the most part.
All right, all right. I think that this would be the time, especially where we have union contracts next year, correct?
We'll start negotiations in the spring, so probably, um, May or June.
Yeah. Yeah.
In anticipation of it being, um, approved at town meeting in March of twenty-three.
Okay, all right. Do we have to wait to upgrade our?
We wouldn't have to wait to do this, um.
We would just have to get the approval.
We just have to get, we have to get Anna's word on whether or not she would recommend that we open up some sort of, um, bargaining discussion with the three unions.
Yeah, yeah. All right, okay, all right.
Good plan.
Okay, awesome.
Perfect.
Okay, awesome.
Have an invoice for BK Systems for the fire alarm for eleven ninety?
Huh?
Now, is that something that?
Well, I.
Something that you need to look at for monitoring?
Is this for your monitoring? Okay, so this is going to be your monitoring contract going forward on the new building?
Right, I'm planning on putting that in.
Um, and they want payment now, that would.
Of course.
Um, okay.
Cause it's working.
All right. Do you have monitoring fees currently in your contract that you would have paid back at the beginning of the year to Northeast?
I don't believe so.
Okay, let me check. I may actually be paying those through general government buildings. Okay, I'll hold on to that. And just an FYI for you, Bob is so cute. He sent me an email this morning saying that the propane tank had been delivered on August twentieth and that they were going to fill it in a couple of days.
Yes.
So I read the email and I thought, well, the twentieth, a couple of days, I mean, today's only the twenty-third. Okay, he meant to say it had been dropped off on the tenth.
Okay.
They are going to deliver your pro- propane tomorrow, and they will have you on automatic delivery going forward.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that's all squared away, but I was.
And no update on the, um, the elevator at this point?
No, and no update. The generator isn't here either.
Right, and.
That's supposed to be shipped the end of the month. It's supposed to be shipped. They say it's gonna be shipped, so we figure to.
Is that from China?
But they can't, they really can't set the generator anyway until our structure is down.
Oh, really?
Because it's in the way.
Oh, okay, all right.
And then when they do the, the grade for the parking lot and everything, they can set the pad and they can set the generator.
Yeah.
But it's supposed to be shipped the end of the month, so within a week, it's supposed to happen.
I mean, obviously, the, the elevator situation, it's out of all of our control. There's nothing, it's no one's fault. It's unfortunate we'll blame it on COVID because that's what it boils down to.
Well, and, and I will tell you that the Department of Labor's stance is that the vendors knew. The vendors knew this change was coming and they should have, um, been prepared for it. And it's, it's not the contractor's fault, it's the vendor is just not, you know.
Everybody likes to blame everybody else for everything and it's, you know.
Well, you know, and you can look at the auto manufacturers, they're like, oh, you knew that was gonna happen.
That's exactly right.
Exactly.
Why you have five hundred thousand trucks sitting in the parking lot?
Yeah, of course, yeah, they're just, you know.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
You know, everybody's looking for chips.
And so obviously, we are still on schedule for the police personnel to move into the building once it is totally complete, except for the elevator?
So we are planning, we have the walkthrough tomorrow morning at eleven AM. Sunny and John, if you'd like to participate in that, that's with, um, Barrett and so forth, um, and Chief. Um, and Chairman Mooney had requested that, um, at least a complete walkthrough by the selectmen take place before they started to move things into the building, so then the conversation goes from there. What is the plan for moving in and so forth?
The plan, yeah, so as soon as I get the nod, uh, my plan is to start emptying, emptying storage units of all the, of all the good, all the good stuff that we have, tables, countertop, you know.
Oh, the, so, okay, the, the stuff that you've acquired, right?
Things that are already acquired, we're gonna move that.
Okay. All right.
We have a plan to move our files, so we can lock our file room, so we can start moving our files over and get all that out of the mill. So that'll be gone. Um, we won't move anything from our building, maybe some minor things that we're not using and getting employees and whatever, getting there.
Right, cause you've got a, right.
But we can't do anything until Osby Mountain, phone company, and CCS come together and say, okay, we can be there on Wednesday, all of us. Because that has to be a complete transition to make that building operational.
Oh, the dispatch.
And apparently, from what I understand about this morning, Friday, Atlantic Broadband is supposed to be here to give us our internet.
Okay, and my.
We can't move anything until we have internet.
Right, so my understanding is, is that the phone company last week had actually done their install and had actually made the, the lines live, according to Barrett.
That's what I hear.
Which they had insisted that you couldn't have the same number live in the new building that you had in the old building. So I'd be curious to see what type of billing comes forward from the phone company for that piece. But I believe the phone lines are set therein, and Atlantic Broadband, um, that was a.
Yeah, they've been, they've been a hard one to get.
They, they've been very difficult.
Perilous, so now they're, they're sure Bob they'll be there Friday. Hopefully Friday is, is the day it all gets completed because computers won't work without internet.
Sure, sure. So it's basically, it's basically all electronic issues at this point, pulling it all together.
Our radio system works over there.
Sure, yeah.
That's been installed, the, uh, all the alarm, alarm system stuff, the fire alarm's fully active, it was set up on. Uh, the burglar system, the, the security system, camera systems, BK's coming back tomorrow, I believe, or Wednesday. And they should be able to wrap that up. All the codes, our codes have been placed in there, so, security-wise, we can do it. I don't believe the, uh, we're not gonna have lockers. The locker company apparently is gonna send temporary lockers for the locker rooms for now. All the stalls, all the, uh, fixtures for the bathrooms are all installed today, so they should be done. So, I mean, we're getting there. There's just a few little hiccups here and there, but it's, it's, you know, there's a, there's a problem with steel right now.
Which is, it's.
There's a problem with aluminum right now, so it's very difficult to get parts and things that we're looking for, so.
So pretty much when you occupy the building, when you occupy the building, we have approval from the state to be able to do that, even though we do not have, no, we do not. So pretty much, when you occupy the building, when you occupy the building, we have approval from the state to be able to do that, even though we do not have, no, we do not.
No, the state doesn't get involved in that piece, but Russ is willing to issue the temporary certificate of, of occupancy. Based on the fact that from the upper level, you have a, um, a secondary exit, and from the lower level, the same situation. That you can, you can, you can access the building, if you are handicapped from either level, you can't go between levels, but you can go. So he was, he's okay with that, so he will issue that.
So basically, what we're going to do, because obviously, a lot of people have asked, when are we gonna be able to see the building? So we have to hold off on doing any of that until we have the, um.
Working elevator.
Elevator in place.
I think the elevator needs to be in place.
Yeah, I think we'd be putting ourselves at a risk.
We don't wanna take that chance, absolutely not.
I think, you know, the town voted for three and a half million dollars for us to use, and I think they need to see a, a three and a half million dollar building.
Right, and without no elevator, it kinda, it's a void.
I do, and I think they need to see what they, where their money went, and I think they'll be very happy with it.
So my next question is, you people are going to occupy that building, all right? And then we're going to pick someday that we have an open house, and are you going to be able to feel comfortable allowing people in that building? Are you gonna be able to secure things that you, that?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's.
Absolutely.
All right, that was, you know where I'm going with this, kinda?
Oh, I do, and, and between the two buildings, there's gonna be a night and day change in the operation.
All right, so it's not gonna, okay.
Everything has its place in this new building, and we've done our best to put the shelving where we need to put the shelving, and.
Okay.
We've, we've laid it out pretty, pretty nicely, so there shouldn't be any issues with security.
All right, that's all.
The other, um, issue that I think needs to be addressed, and I mentioned it to Russ on Friday when he came in to talk to me about the certificates of occupancy, is the exterior of the building, um, the landscaping associated with the sidewalks and such. I really think that that needs to be complete before you're physically using the building, and here's why. If you have someone come in the front door, the upper level, and they are handicapped, and they need to get to the lower level. The ideal way would be to come down the sidewalk and then go ba- in the back door. Right now, you would not be able to do that. I don't know where that stands, though, in relationship to taking down, is there an issue?
I can answer that.
Okay, good.
Uh, because I've asked that, I've asked that question myself.
Okay, good.
And originally, what was going to happen was, the paving company, first of all, DBU was gonna come in and finish the grading for the, for the sidewalk. The paving company was gonna come in and pave those areas that are open, because that's pavement, not concrete. That changed to where DBU didn't wanna come back unless they were coming back to do.
The whole thing.
And Greg and the Bobcat actually did some of the, some of the stuff in the immediate front of the building, where the garage doors are. To alleviate us having to walk across planks, they put, he shuttled the fill-in, so now you can walk, you can walk in here. So DBU, to move all their equipment over just to do that, to pick their equipment up to leave, because they're not ready to do the site work, because the building's still there. I think we need to go back to the original conversation of, have the paving company come in and just knock out those areas and make sidewalks functional.
I think DBU should come in and do whatever had been the plan on those, on those sidewalks. I totally agree. I, I don't think that this should be something that should be put on our public works department to, to do, because they weren't, that, that wasn't the, that wasn't the deal.
What, and, and what happened was Bob had just become so frustrated, and, and you looked at the safety act, that everyone was walking across two planks.
Yeah.
There was a span between a block and a.
Yeah.
And some concrete, and you just said, saw, saw him working out here, and said, hey, can you do me a favor and just move this stuff over here? And Greg did, so that took away, took away the trip to Fall Hazard.
Yeah.
So.
So do you want?
Maybe instead of asking DBU, we tell them.
Right, and that was just what I was, I, I. Do you want me to tell Barrett to have DBU come back and do the site work for the sidewalk?
It has to go through Barrett, and Barrett needs to be the, he needs to be the heavy on this. You know, Bob can only do what Bob can do in the position that he's in, so Barrett has to control what's happening there, absolutely.
And I really didn't do that, I mean, after Bobcat was back.
No, 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 I just don't want, I, my fear was that the next thing you know, they'd be looking to have you finished.
Then we track all that dirt right back into that building.
We're running the, you know, we're running the, uh, the dolly, and I'm trying to line those things up, the boards are tipping, and we're like, oh my God, we're gonna drop this stuff, and. So it works out, at least now, we can, we can dolly it out.
Let's get some temporary carpets in there, so we're walking in or driving into those things, mats, so you don't track the dirt into that building if.
Bob has a secondary mat already outside, so you go from one mat to the walk-off mat to the inside, so.
My next question is, the stuff that you have stored, what arrangements have you made to clean this stuff when you get it to the building, before you put it in the building?
That's what we're gonna do when we arrive here with it, before it actually goes in.
Even if it's wiped out, yep.
And then it goes in, absolutely.
Awesome, all right. Anything else, any other questions? So it's eleven o'clock tomorrow?
Eleven o'clock tomorrow, and I will, yep, I will send an email to Barrett today, telling him that we are, um, expecting that sidewalk to be completed prior to the rest of the, the, um, site work, and we'll.
And I guess the.
I will tell you now that I probably won't be there tomorrow, not because I don't wanna be, I had to go back to work.
No.
Come on.
The auction houses just couldn't live without me.
All right. The, the move-in portion for us, and to answer your question about wiping things down, I wanna do this orderly, I don't wanna do it like a fire sale. That's why, the longer, you know, it takes us to really move from, from the PD, and it gives me that opportunity to take our time, put it in, that's.
Throw out, throw out, get rid of whatever.
From office out there, I already talked to Mike, the junk guy.
Yeah.
I said, I've got a bunch of metal petitions and everything we're not gonna use, he said, whatever it is, just let me come down and look at it, and I'll get it right out of here for you, so. Yeah, it's gonna be quick.
Okay, all right, well, I think.
I'm here for you tomorrow, you know.
No, I appreciate that.
No, sir, I've been asking.
No, you, you, we haven't been asked too much, and you guys need anything, we're still listening, okay?
Yeah, all right, awesome. So, but I just think it's important, if anyone's listening, that we are going to have an open house at some point. We're just obviously, again, and we're fortunate, we don't have to be out of the building on a specific date. We're lucky that way, because in most cases, it's a, it's a mess.
We just want the first course of pavement down before it's over.
Yeah, I, I understand, I know. Yeah, yes, yeah.
That's all.
What? The drainage situation in front of the garage, I haven't looked at it too extensively, but that's gonna be fixed.
Fixed, okay.
I, I, I was kinda filling it up, I'm like, where is that one gonna go?
No, there's a, there's a plane.
All right, okay, awesome, okay.
Repair the laser, please.
There we go. All right, our next item, health trust anticipated return of surplus, that's a nice item.
That is a nice item, so, um, it is anticipated that we will be receiving approximately seventy thousand one hundred dollars in return of surplus on our health insurance, and four thousand five hundred and fifty-seven on our dental. Based on the share, um, that is paid by the employees, which will go back to them individually. Um, we should net out approximately sixty thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars that will go into the general fund as offsetting revenue, um, to be used against tax rate. So that, that's another piece of, um, very good news, yes. Um, I anticipate that, as you have in the past, you would want them to give us a check, not just a credit on our health insurance bills. Okay, all right, so that will be, that will be taken care of, um, we would be receiving the check in early November, but we'll be able to estimate, um, the amount for our, um, tax rate setting purposes. So, we're in good shape with that.
All right.
So, the next item is a very unusual circumstance, um, so Lad Hill Cooperative, which is located off of Lad Hill, it's the Mobile Home Park, across from Solar Village. Um, there was a unit in there at twenty-two Cherry Street, Luigi Knox, whom Cynthia had had numerous, um, correspondence with regarding a payment schedule. He had owed us a substantial amount of money. He apparently, at some point a year or so ago, um, quit claimed the property to an individual for a dollar, um, and walked away. Um, subsequently, Lad Hill Mobile Home Park determined that the deed had never gotten recorded, it was an illegal transfer. They were able to get the individual evicted from the unit, and they were able to get a quitclaim deed, so that they actually, in fact, owned the property, Lad Hill Mobile Home Park Cooperative. They in turn then paid all of the outstanding taxes that had been owed by Mr. Knox, to the tune of seventy-five hundred dollars. Um, normally, when a mobile home park takes ownership, before they pay it, they reach out to us and say, you know, can you work with us? Can you abate some of the taxes and help us out, you know, this, this unit is totally destroyed, et cetera. So Cynthia and I chatted about it on Friday, and it is a very unusual circumstance, and were we to abate, um, or refund all of the interest and tax that they paid? We've created a significant amount of work for the tax collector's office, because she's going to be, she has to do each entry individually. She suggested that we reach out to the park and offer to refund to them the tax piece that was paid, not the interest, but the tax. So, um, I did, I, I did fail to add that amount up, um, they've paid some significant, um, interest, um. So it may turn out to be around a fifty-fifty, you know, um, situation, where we'd be refunding to them about, maybe thirty-five hundred dollars to four thousand. Cynthia thought that would be a, a potential reasonable workaround, um, obviously, you know, there's no precedence for this, we've never done this. We've never, we've never had a, a mobile home park pay all the taxes and then come back to us and say, would you consider refunding them to us? Um, their point in their letter is that, um, they're a small cooperative, um, they felt that it was really, um, burdensome for, um, their, um, other members who own in the park to have had to have come up with this cash to pay this off, um, and again, it's one of those situations. So, I don't know, I guess what I'm looking for from you initially is, um, may I open up that conversation with Lad Hill Mobile Home Park to make that potential offer to them? Um, or do you have some other position you'd like me to take?
For once, we're in the driver's seat.
I know, I know, yeah.
I don't wanna give them any money back. Uh, unfortunately, the, the leadership program in this, uh, debacle here, these, Eddie Spratt and Tammy Clark, um, members of the board of directors. It would've been a lot smoother, I think, for the flow of money in the town and the way things have to be done legally, um, to come in and not expect, and ask for an abatement before all this got done.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, and you know, it's interesting, because they used to have, um, Tracy Shack used to be the individual that represented the, the park, and I don't know if that was before they became a cooperative. Um, and she would come in to us ahead of time, when they knew they were gonna take, um, ownership of a unit, and we've only done it over there a couple times, it's been very minimal.
Yeah, they put in a couple new ones, people bought new ones, some new stuff there.
But, um. It could be that they didn't even understand maybe the procedure or whatever.
It's not something that we have out there as a written policy, it's just something that we have always worked with the Mobile Home Park units, you know.
Yeah.
Pine Gardens and all of them, to, to help get new units into the park that we could start collecting taxes, so.
And what is happening with this, is this unit gone that was there?
Um, I don't know at this point whether it's gone or not, I haven't, um, I did not check to see if there'd been any building permits to, um, remove it or anything. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, it doesn't say in the letter, um, certainly something I can look up when I.
So what you're suggesting is, where we typically refund the, um, interest?
Well, typically, we abate the tax, and we don't refund anything.
We don't refund anything, you're exactly right.
Cynthia had suggested that perhaps in this instance, we refund the tax, but not the interest.
Does it just make the bookkeeping wise, it makes it easier, I guess, is that what it is?
Yeah.
All right, um, hmm. I guess, my two questions is, it, the park owns this property now.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, it's there, we don't know that.
It is there, it is in deplorable condition, my understanding is it's basically down to the studs, is what I have been told by the, the park.
So it's probably gonna be demolished.
I would think so, and there was a unit that, um, did come before the planning board, I believe. John, potentially at your last meeting, wasn't there a unit that, that was at, was it twenty-two Cherry? I don't either, I don't remember the address, um, there was a question, it's going in on the, the far end of the park.
Oh, that was a distance, that was, oh, that's right, there was a little, yeah, because they were going a little bit longer.
It may very well have been this unit.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, um.
Well, I, I think probably, when I'm looking, when I'm looking at this, I, I'm gonna take the, uh, position that they just didn't know, I wouldn't know the right procedure, all right? And obviously, we've abated, and I guess I'm, I'll, um, whether you abate the interest of the tax, I guess it's, it's one or the other. Um, I'm kinda would like to know how much that was, but as long as it was maybe fifty percent of this, I guess I don't have an issue with that, um, and hopefully.
Well, by the looks of the amounts, it wasn't a tremendously expensive trailer to start with.
No, 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 it's just.
So the, the interest started at this at eighteen and a half percent.
Yeah, and now it's.
Now it's twelve and a half, so.
Yeah.
It compounds pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like, before I gave an answer on this, I'd like to know.
The amount.
Know where we are with that unit right this minute, is it, or today, or tomorrow, or the next day, is it, has there been a demolition permit? If it's, if they took the fuse panel out of it, or the circuit panel out of it, it's pretty much uninhabitable, it's gotta be rebuilt.
But, but, but the park must still have to be paying taxes on it, cause it's, if it's still there, right?
Yeah, they'll, they'll, they'll be receiving a bill this fall.
They're gonna be getting a bill here, so I'd like to know if it's standing, if it isn't standing, I mean, uh, before I made a decision on this, and what they're. Maybe, maybe they've already got a demolition.
Right, I'll find out the status of the building and get the dollar amount.
I'm, I'm not opposed to abating some of this, but I'm also, I don't wanna come back in and say, okay, we, we left it set there for two more years.
Right, are you gonna obey, right, right.
It may cost us money to alter a tax bill, because of the time it takes in the town hall for them to do that, that's not just this credit memo, I mean, they gotta back up some records, so.
Yeah.
Let's.
Okay, I'll just get to the rest of the information.
Yeah, a little bit more information, please.
I mean, at this point, it doesn't really matter when we fund the money.
For the first time, we're in the driver's seat.
Exactly, exactly, so I will, um, I will get you that information.
Okay, the other new business is this block party issue?
Yes, so, um, property owner at twenty-two Mill Street, Patricia Bushy, has put into the land use office an application for a special event. Um, one of the requests included in that, um, application for a special event was that, um, Mill Street be closed from the, um, from twenty-two Mill Street, past Lawrence Court, to Main Street on Saturday, September fourth, for this block party. Um, the land use office is prepared to issue the special events permit, um, contingent upon the board of selectmen's vote to, um, close the road. Each of the departments, each of the departments were given an opportunity to weigh in on it, and to the best of my knowledge, from Candace, there were no comments.
Are they renting the pavilion?
No.
They're not using, just wanna block the streets.
It's a block party.
A block party, they're.
They're gonna stand in the street.
They're gonna sing in the street.
Sing in the street, sing.
Uh, Mr. Chase's band, um, who actually lives over there, I believe, is, okay, is gonna be, um, playing music and so forth, so. So, um.
We all invited.
They didn't have to provide anything, that's all, I, my, my only question.
I, I, I don't, did you respond to Candace's, the special event permit last week, cause?
I, I did not, I just figured it would.
Okay, so it, it doesn't say, uh, yes, she's looking for road closed signs.
Says right here.
Yeah.
Road closed signs, described desired event signage.
Do you guys want me to provide road closed signs?
Well, it doesn't say we're supposed to provide it, and it doesn't say who's gonna.
Well, it's, yeah, it's kinda funny, it says. Well, it's, yeah, it's kinda funny, it says, uh.
Describe design, event signage, permit required, road closed signs.
Yeah, it just doesn't say who's gonna provide the signs, but, um, I can certainly have Candace include that in her letter, that we'd be willing to provide two signs, one for each end, I guess.
Well, but I think the other issue is, is that, um, maybe you could, when is this? It's probably a Saturday?
It's September fourth.
Okay, and so I think it would be to, um, we could provide those, but it's up to them to put them up and to take them down. So we don't have to have somebody on a Saturday and then whoever, wherever they're left, then you could pick them up on Monday or something.
Put them under the pavilion.
I just, my only thought, like, as far as public works is concerned, I really don't have a mission. You know, they think of closing the road, I mean, you get fire, or something like that, it's just.
They were, they were given.
That's my only.
They were given the opportunity to re, to.
I know.
I guess if they can't get in one way, they go the other, right?
I'm looking at it, you're not gonna have two thousand people there.
No, no.
If there is an issue, it's gonna be with the people that are there.
Right there, yeah. And I think, I, I think I read that they had talked with the neighbors and, oh, I guess probably all the neighbors are going, or neighborhood.
You know, they're talking a short piece of road.
Yeah, it's just.
If they want signs, they should come and deck me, I'm not gonna go out looking.
That's true, they should, maybe that's.
They should make arrangements with me and we should go to them.
Yeah, and that way you could drop them off on Friday and pick them up on Monday. Yep, yep.
It was like four a.m., I mean. Kind of got to the point where, you know, mine will.
Drop them off.
Put them off.
All right.
When we put them off, they're just gonna listen to their, so.
Okay. Sure, and if she, if, if they're responsible, right, okay, that makes sense, I don't think that's unreasonable.
I don't think it's wanting signs, but if something happens, they should be kind of responsible for it.
Responsible for it. Okay. So if you are good with those, um, conditions, I just need a motion from you to close the road on that, from that specific.
So moved.
It's from twelve P.M. until six P.M., so it is a daytime event.
No, eight. Couldn't you say eight?
Oh, I'm sorry, it is an eight, I had six, it is eight o'clock, I apologize.
Twelve, twelve, stay.
John, it's eight o'clock, you're right.
Yeah, give them back down the ordinance.
Sure.
I'll make that motion to accept this.
Okay.
Who's second it?
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll let Candy know so she can send out a, um, the letter, okay?
Yep, do we have any other new business?
I do not, okay.
Um, old business?
I have a question.
Oh.
Under old.
Under old business, oh, okay, old business, John has a question.
We made an offer to a gentleman as to a tax payment, quite a sizable one on a home. You sent him a letter, he'd asked us to.
Yeah, and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't received it. I had told him, I had sent him a second follow-up letter advising me I had thirty days to make good on that payment and I've not heard anything. I haven't checked the account to see if he's been in, but Cynthia hasn't said that she got a check yet, so.
And what happens if we do not, then we go for tax?
We'd be moving forward with the tax collectors' deed.
Yep.
All right, okay. Okay, status update, A R P A guidance from Treasury related to non-competitive procurement.
So, um, when we received our funds from, um, the American Rescue Plan Act, the three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. There was some question as to whether or not we were gonna have to potentially go out to bid for the water.
Oh, yes, right, yes, the well.
The well, well repairs and re-line.
Yes.
And I had reached out to the various entities and I kept getting an answer, well, you have to, you have to bid it. I followed up with Treasury and Treasury, um, did finally get back to me last Wednesday, um, advising me that, um, there are, um, guidelines that would allow us to do a non-competitive bid. I have reached back out to Gopher, um, which is the state entity governing the, the funds, to ask them to whom I send the letter requesting that non-competitive, competitive bid process. So, I am hopeful, um, they had indicated they would get back to me this week, that we'll be able to put that letter out to them, they'll, I, cause I have to get a, a signed letter of approval back from the entity who gave us the money, being the state, in order to go forward, but.
And do we have a firm bid from the gentleman on the well?
He had, um, indicated in his, uh, I think it was about, it was four, I believe it was four hundred and fifty, but let me.
And that was a firm or whatever?
Oh, I, I, yeah, all right. If I would call.
Cause I think the last time we talked, um, it was a rough estimate that he had given us.
Well, he had submitted a, um, scope and budget, um, the middle of. Um, let's see, where is the attachment? Okay, so, it's, he's still calling it an estimate.
Okay.
But he does identify the various, um, entities that he had intended to use, um, as far as subcontractors and so forth, so, um.
So I guess my question is, we're rece, but, but obviously, we're receiving more than what his contract was.
So initially? Initially, we're only, we've only received three hundred and eighty thousand.
Right.
So ideally, as he begins the work, um, we're going to need to have the balance of the funds from the June twenty-twenty-two dispersment to, to pay him off in full. So there'll have to be some timing worked out in that regard.
All right, and we don't have, so in other words, there's not a capital account that if the timing didn't work?
We do have a capital reserve fund, however, we can't then put those monies back into it without waiting till the following year to say that there was a surplus in funds and you can't do that with the American Rescue Plan monies.
Okay.
Only other thing we could do is we could calculate what the lost revenue was during the COVID, COVID time. And any funds that were considered lost revenue, you can then take from these monies and just use them for whatever purpose. But where we had already earmarked the first three hundred and eighty-three, that would be a much more difficult process to go through, so.
All right, okay.
So it's good news that we're moving in the right direction with it.
Okay.
So.
Legislative action requests, what's this?
So, I had spoken with, um, Representative Trotter here last week and he had wanted me to pass on to you that if there were any, um, uh, legislative actions that you would like him to submit, um, on behalf of the town of Belmont, that the period for submission is from September thirteenth to the nineteenth. And he would certainly be willing to, um, you know, talk with us or consider anything. I certainly don't have anything at this point, I don't know.
Now, when you're saying legislative actions, let's, let's talk a little bit about, um, there's more and more, obviously, discussions, but this may not be legislator. I'm just trying to come up with a, um, plan that all of the communities are gonna be able to receive funds for, um, body cams. And I know.
State police was just funding.
Yeah, that, that language.
By whom?
All the state police.
By whom? Feds. Right. Why can't there be legislative action?
I thought they had put a bill in last year and it failed.
It failed. There was a bill, I believe it failed, I don't know if it was gonna come back in the same writing that it.
I was just gonna say, but can it be rewritten a different way?
And that was supposed to open up funding, availability for us, I don't know if it was fifty-fifty with a match or whether, um, common, you know? You could, you could do it other ways other than a fifty-fifty.
Well, I just think that that's, that's.
It's gotta be a hundred percent.
Right.
I can ask him if there's anything.
I think, I think that that's important, well, I think, I believe it was the city of Nashua that voted to provide full body cams for everybody.
Right.
And I know that that's gonna be an issue, it's coming.
It's coming. It's, I know that we, uh, we submitted a grant.
Yeah, I know.
For body cams, I don't believe it's gonna go anywhere.
Yeah, that's why I'm thinking that our legislature should be, um, getting on the bandwagon. That was just my first thought off the top of my head.
Mine was, mine would be the same one, it's time for the state to step up with all these taxes, uh, boat taxes.
Oh, there you go, that's exactly right. The boat thing.
There's no reason, you don't need a boat unless you live on an island and then you don't need a five hundred thousand dollar boat. So I, at this point, the money that that, the sales of those brought into the state and the registration, it's ridiculous. So they've gotta do something about it and I know that's a, there's a big lobby group from the boat dealers that say, no, thank you.
Oh, of course, I'm sure. So what you're saying is, is the, the town tax portion of a boat.
Yep.
Plate.
Yep.
Should be set up similar to a vehicle, basically.
What happens is, to, to defer this, the independent dealers, we use one as Quan, only as an example.
Yeah.
They can issue a boat registration, well, they don't wanna do one about taxes, they don't wanna collect your tax registration, so I mean, it's gonna be, the town clerks are gonna have that control. And when, and she still can, she can still register the boats here.
Of course, yes.
But the, the big example here is, you, you can register boats from out-of-state people. So you just think about it, the money that might bring in, just an odd little hamlet here in Belmont, and we're not on a huge lake, but for the.
Yeah, if it was based on the value of the boat, not based on the, you know, flat rate.
Or even if they came up with a, a, a small mill rate, I mean, you gotta do, use the mill system like I do in an automobile, there's some consent.
Right, but.
And that's why a lot of these mariners, and I'm pretty close to one of them, sold forty-eight percent of his boats last year, never left, they left their manufacturer and went to other states, then New Hampshire, but continually get registered in New Hampshire.
So that's, uh, there's another, that's another.
Yep, scam.
That's right off the top of our heads.
Yep.
I may need to arrange for, um, a meeting between Mr., so he has a better understanding of the whole thing that we're looking for, okay? All right, and I was just looking at the, um, the county had sent a list of what they were anticipating using their American Rescue plans for or suggested.
Should be a vast, huge amount, right?
Suggested proj, projects and body cams are not on the list.
They're not on the list?
Nope.
Oh, really?
Nope, nowhere.
No, they're gonna fix the area, they're gonna use some money up the gun stock, they're gonna put some pavement in, pave the parking lots, it was in the paper a while back.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, huh, all right.
Okay.
Well, maybe if, if he wants to come in and have a gap session, we can.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yep, I will reach out to him and, um, he was, he was extremely, um.
Got a school tax bill and half.
He, um.
And every other town.
Every other town.
He had reached out to us, um, last week regarding the optocom system, which is the, he had reached out to me, um, indicating that, you know, there has been some ongoing discussion about that. That's the light changing system, um, when emergency vehicles come through the lights, it's, yeah, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh.
So he had had some questions about that and some, we have some that need repairs apparently, so. Um, aside from that, um.
No other old business?
Don't have any other old business, um, I do have one quick item under non-public session, but that would be all I would have.
So at this point, our next meeting is scheduled for September thirteenth at ten o'clock here.
Yes, and.
Unless Mr. Trotter wants to.
Right, wants to do something sooner.
And we will post that accordingly.
And, um, Mark Eckberg, um, your code enforcement official will be coming to that meeting on the thirteenth with, um, an update on where he is, what projects he's gotten done. And some information on, um.
I got some information last week.
I, I did hear, um, a brief report of that, that meeting, yes. And he's also going to be asking for some changes in, um, fine language and so forth, um.
Okay, so then we, anything else, gentlemen?
No, I'm good.
You're good?
See you tomorrow, love it.
Yes, um, so we're gonna go into non-public, uh, ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter.
Um, it would be.
A.
A, letter A.
Go call?
Sunny Ben?
Who's doing it?
John Pike.
All right, thank you.
All right, let me stop.
Recording stopped.
Immediately.
Mark and Trey are leaving the house.
Okay.
See you guys.
We'll allow you.
See you tomorrow.
All right, bye, guys.
Did you shut the door?
Ah, yes, it will be so fine.
So good reports on Old Homestead that I've heard.
Yes.
Yeah? Seems as if it went.